The balcony in. We're gonna have to put a balcony in.
Oh, good.
They may be back in the future.
Too bad we have that screen in there still.
Yeah, I know. They don't play that much.
Well, that's true.
There, there. They can't see behind that screen.
I think we should move them from there.
Yeah?
Or move the screen out of there.
Somebody's joining us.
Oh.
Stacy, do you want to move your chairs then?
It's up to you. They're just gonna look at the back of the screen otherwise.
They come up here or?
You know.
Here, Stacy.
Oh, they're hooked on the... Where goes?
I'm never gonna watch.
No, I'll be really polite.
I'm nervous.
I'm gonna yell at you, pal.
There you go.
I'm just gonna call her, tell her.
Time is 4:32 PM. The Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of 29 November 2022 is called to order. I'd ask those in our council chambers, if you have not signed in, please sign in on the clipboard before you leave this evening. And also, I'd ask everybody to put their cell phones on vibrate. We'll call a member. Daniel?
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markrath.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
Want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening, those in our council chambers, those joining us by Zoom. And remember, our council meetings can be seen on the city YouTube channel and also we're on Channel 14 on Wednesday evening. Want to give a special welcome to the youth that are in the audience this evening with their Director Stacy Almarus and love to have you here this evening. A few announcements for the next couple of weeks. There's many Christmas holiday activities within our community within the next couple of weeks. And if you want to really know what times and dates they are, check the Pelican Rapids Press because Lou has that in our last edition of the press. And just check out the press and that'll give you all the information. Our next city council meeting is scheduled on Tuesday, December 13, 4:30 PM here in the city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience here for citizens' comments? Anyone for citizens' comments? Judy?
Judy Tavitt. I just represent, I just talked with Justin. The merchants on the move want to thank the mayor, the city, Brian Olson and his street committee. That parade would not have been as successful without all of your efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Anyone else for citizens' comments? Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to item number three, additions and the deletion to the agenda. I want to delete two items. We're gonna delete item 4A, Approval of Council Minutes. We're gonna delete 4C2, Liquor Store Report. So, delete those two items, item number 4A and 4C2. And we're gonna add item number 20, Jeff Sconcing, a city prosecuting attorney. Item number 20, Jeff Sconcing, city prosecuting attorney. And add item number 21, liquor store personnel. Item 21, liquor store personnel. Any other additions or deletions? Don?
Mayor, item number six, Design Engineering, there's those two bullet points. I want to add a bullet point, Operation and Maintenance Plan.
Okay.
So, O and M Plan.
So, that'd be, item number six, add the O and M Plan. Any other additions or deletions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve with the two deletions and the three additions.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us the same? Motion carried. Approval of consent agenda, I will read those items. Item number 4B is Approval Accounts Payable Listing. 4C1 is Utility Report, which is in your packet. Item 4D is Pelican River Fesens Forever Gambling Permit, VFW Post 5252, February 4, 2023. And 4E is Plumber Registration of 2023 for Mr. Plumber Chad Hanson.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us the same? Motion carried. Okay, we're gonna jump all the way down to item number nine, Pool Committee. We have Amy King and pool members are here this evening. We also have Scott of Design Intent Architects and now he's going to give an overview of the future pool design. Amy?
Amy King with the Pelican Rapids Pool Committee. I just want to recognize who we have here too. We have Daisy Barrigan, we have Kate Marquinez, Marie Marquinez, Elizabeth, oh, and Mark Duffin, we're here in the corner. So, from our pool committee tonight, we're gonna have Scott from Design Intent come up here in just a second and explain to you kind of the proposal that we're seeking approval for tonight. But as a committee, we have gotten to a point where we just felt what our original plans were, how many years ago, 2019, are feasible right now with increased costs, supply chain issues, COVID fundraising issues, things like that. So, as a committee, we decided to ask Design Intent if they could design something very similar within our budget. And so, we asked him if he could come in under a $4 million budget. That was the cap where we would be with our current cash that we fundraised that's in the bank, with the commitments that are still coming in from businesses and the commitment that the city council had made prior, that the city would be willing to contribute, hit that $4 million. And so, we have a new proposal. What we're seeking tonight is that we would be able to move forward with this new proposal to pay Design Intent to finalize all of the designs that go with that, to operate them, to drop bid documents so that we could rebid the project after the New Year and then potentially, if contractors were available, potentially build next summer if that works with their schedules. So, yeah, I'll let him come up and kind of talk you through the new design and some of those things, then we're here for questions.
Hi, Amy.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. My name is Scott Demartelere, I'm with Design Intent Architects. Don, could you maybe put up the other picture first just for a second? Just a quick recap, if you guys haven't looked at this drawing in a while, this was back in 19, or 19, in 2019 when we did the original design for the Aquatic Center with the pool house to the north there, which was sitting right on top of the old existing pool. You kind of see that rectangle underneath there, kind of a thin line. You kind of, let's see, the circle there was the, I call it a hot tub, but it was more like the, that was like the little kiddie pool right there, and then the pool house was right there too. And then, of course, the pool is to the south, closest to the road down by 108 there. That was the original design. That one came in at $5.1 million here about a year and a half ago. And that was prevailing wage, should we have gotten the monies from the state, so then we were required to do prevailing wage. If you could put the other one up now, Don? So, then Amy called here a couple of months ago, actually probably five or six months ago, the pool committee started talking probably right away after the failure of the original design. And they had asked us if we could come up with a new design that would be within their budget, which is $4 million. They also were requesting that they would still like to keep the zero entry pool, the splash pad with like the little sprinklers and stuff in it, the slide, and again, of course, keeping it under $4 million. It was, we were thinking for a while, looking at our original design and we chatted, the design group, we chatted quite a few times, and decided that we just couldn't remove portions of the building from the original design and keep the setup the way it was and still meet that $4 million budget. So, we started looking at what we could do to reduce the scope a little bit and the size and get it underneath that $4 million. And the plan you see up here is what we came up with. I forgot I have this with me too. So, I suppose it won't see here. That doesn't work on that screen. All right, never mind. So, what we did is, first thing we looked at was the pool house. It was a little bit big. It also had the showers and the toilets for the campground. We took those off, but there is a spot here that we could add that. Oh, wow. I touch this. You can even do this. I'm very careful. I start feeling like a weatherman.
I can zoom in on it.
No, that's good. So, right here would be a location where you could put an addition on when funds are available for a shower and bathrooms for the children at a later date. So, we reduced the pool house by about 2,200 square feet or about 43% reduction in size. The swimming pool, we kept the zero entry, we kept the splash pad, we kept the slide, and we also kept the three-lap pool, three-lane pool with a diving well, but we reduced it in length. We went to a 25-yard pool instead of a 25-meter pool. And my understanding is high schools most of the time use the 25-yard pool and universities use 25-meter. So, we reduced it down to 25 yards, made it a little bit smaller. And then, we reduced the pool deck, so all the way around the pool deck by 4,000 square feet. The pool itself, we reduced by about 1,200 square feet or about 24%. So, the pool deck reduced 33%, the pool itself was down 24%. That meant that our bather load, so original design, we could have 322 bathers in the swimming pool. This new design, we can have 250 at the max. And let's see what else. So, and then, we moved the parking. If you remember, the parking was along that clinkie down. Now, we moved it up here. That's another amenity that if you think you can get by without that, you could save an additional $45,000 by removing that and everybody would be parking behind the church. I know that they do that now a little bit and maybe the church would be able to let that still happen. We did a prevailing wage cost estimate back in October and at that time, we came up with a budget of $3,790,000 for the scenario that you see up there at the moment. And then, this is just, well, I kind of just went through. That's the original design. That's new design. Went from 4938 square feet down to 2815. And the pool went from 5112 down to 3868.
Did we remove the Lacy River?
Oh, yeah, we removed the Lacy River, that's true. That's all gone now too. So, that is the new design and we believe we can keep it under $4 million if we can get it built quickly. You know, as the time goes by, prices always go up. Any questions?
What's the current capacity, Brian?
1 to 8 years, like that. I've just got to comment, with the parking lot that large, that's a big separation between the pool and the campground. Is there any way to cut that in half? Allow parking on the street as they do now?
We don't have, oh, they could.
Cut it, cut it so you only have one side of parking, that side.
Right, so we take off the...
Take that other side off.
Yep. And then, you would park, parallel parking here is what you're saying, Brian?
Yes, they kind of currently do.
Yeah.
And I mean, the parking would be, but there'd be such a separation, I'm afraid, from the campground that even putting the bathhouse over there, with that larger parking lot, that's just mine.
I think it can be done, absolutely can be done, sure.
Put it to the pool committee.
It's a chance that they might just drive up to the pool house too and use it that way. I see that all the time in state parks.
Oh, sure.
So, are there any other questions? I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
What has the pool committee said regarding these revised plans?
They were in favor of that. Okay, that's why I'm here today.
So, what you're looking for now is okay by the city council to...
I believe the pool committee is asking approval to move forward with the design. And if you approve it, we would be able to do it this winter so we could get, we could put it up for bid in the spring, absolutely.
I think that was kind of where I was going, is to talk a little bit about the timeline.
Sure.
Because if you go out for bids in the spring, there's the possibility that you'd be awarding the bids and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the conversation was you'd start construction after the pool season this year, construct it through fall and next winter and potentially open up with a new pool in summer of 2024.
2024, yep.
So, that schedule is different than the previous schedule? Because didn't we talk about losing this season?
You'd still lose the next year's season.
Okay, okay.
It would be nice if we could use the pool, because right now, the existing pool sits here and the new pool is down here and the bathhouse is here. The old scenario, the bathhouse sat right on top of the old pool and then the new pool was over here again too. It would be kind of nice if we could leave this while we do this work here, but it is pretty close and I don't know if we'd want to tear this down after all this is in place, that maybe you could use that pool during the process of most of this being constructed, possibly. I do know that sanitary sewer runs this way and right now, I think it's going out that way, so we'd have to convert that a little bit to make something happen there. I don't know how feasible that is, but there's always a small possibility. But I think you'll still lose a season of swimming.
Are we using the same water service going into the pool?
Go out and put a new one in. I think that was, that was in the original plans under the engineering.
So, the season you would lose would be the 2024 season?
Or 23.
23, I'm hoping, if we can get it...
If they can bid it out, that's what they're talking about.
Are we still waiting for bonding by chance? Are we still looking for the state bonding money? Are we not?
If, if, if the council goes ahead with this and you can keep it underneath that $4 million, I don't think we need the state, which means we don't need prevailing wage.
We don't need prevailing wage, so this number would be lower than...
It could go lower. Obviously, inflation would drive it back up maybe, but basically, the city would, with this plan, the city would, would plan on going forward without state bonding money, knowing that we could do it. Having said that, I know that I've been getting information requests from the state bonding committee already because they want to know with there being no bonding bill and potentially with the surplus, they're looking at potentially doing somewhat of a bonding, trying to get money into some projects this next session. They're asking me, is our project still active? Has it changed? Has the scope changed? What's the cost estimates? So, you know, going forward, my thought was, if the, if the city likes this idea, we could move forward with this and I could let them know, yeah, the scope has changed, but we don't know what the, you know, ultimately what the bids would come in at and keep it on the bonding project list. If we get awarded, great, we may not need it. If we don't get awarded, we're still able to go forward with the, with the donations and the city's commitment to do it anyway. Scott, if we went forward with this concept, wouldn't, would bids letting be?
We'd be wanting to go out for bid in February. We'd be pushing this to the front of the line because it's, it's important to get this one out as fast as possible. There are only a few pool contractors and they are extremely busy. And I've been in contact with associated pools and they do, most of the pools around this area and they pretty much beat out everybody right now price-wise. So, I'd like to make sure that they'll bid this project. So, I would, if you approve it, I'll call them tomorrow and tell them, hey, this one's a go and that way, they'll be on their radar.
Council, have any questions for Scott? I just did, you talked about the zero entry and stuff and I don't remember if you mentioned the play, the play features, the splash pad and the fact that that infrastructure will be there, but some of them components won't be on right away.
More than likely, the play feature won't be there, but we'll have all the mountings in the pool forward already, so it's ready to go when you do have funds available. If the prices come in really well, then the play feature will be part of it. That may happen with the splash pad too, but I'd really like to see the splash pad complete, you know, so they get a nice place to just kind of run around there. Like a play area for the pool.
So, with that, is there a way that we could, those, those two things, the splash pad and the play features, have the actual structures themselves both as a separate alternate so that when them bids come in, we could see what them costs are going to be, knowing what total bid is, we'd be able to say yes to either or both alternates at the same time?
Yeah, we'll, we'll bid it out as alternates for you, absolutely. I could bid out the parking lot for an alternate too or even half or two, that sort of thing, it'd be probably two-thirds, but it'd be so. Because maybe you don't want parking lot at all, maybe you're okay with it being grass.
Council, sir?
Yes.
Where's the current driveway? I don't have my bearings.
The existing driveway? So, the church is right over here and this is the existing driveway going back to the parking lot behind the church here. This is the exact location of the existing driveway.
Where do you turn left to go into the RV camp?
It's up a little further up here. Oh, yeah, there it is, right here.
Any other questions for Scott? If not, is anybody ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we accept the recommended plans and continue to move forward with the pool.
Well, second that. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Could you just go over on that diagram where the splash pad and these play things are?
Let me zoom in a little bit.
There you go. So, this here is the splash pad and this is where the zero entry would start and goes down and this is a play feature within the zero entry area.
Okay.
And then, this goes down slowly to 3 foot 6 and this is the plunge pool for the slide. They would, what you don't see is the, oh, yeah, here's the stairs going up. You would go down the slide like this and you'd end up in the pool right here. This is 3 foot 6 all the way in this area and as you get to this point, then it starts sloping down and then it goes down into the diving well in that area. So, unfortunately, we can't make this any wider than it is because this is going up and this is going down, so this is kind of the location where we can have the two going right up to the pool.
How wide is the part where the swimming lanes are?
This way?
Yeah.
They are legal swimming lanes. I really couldn't tell you exactly what they are. It's what it, they would be in a normal lap pool that you would find in a high school. That's the same width as that, so they're legal lanes for swimming. I don't have the dimension on there, sorry. Maybe we, if it's on the other one, on the old one? Yeah, I don't know if I, if it's on there or not. It is not. I can get that information for you though, if you like.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us the same? Motion carried.
The only other component to this then that we probably want to touch on is Scott had provided the pool committee with, obviously, he's got to go back and he can talk about it, but a proposal to do all this redesign and get us back through the bidding process, the construction project, if you want to touch on that, Scott.
Sure, absolutely, thank you, Don. So, we provided a, a design fee proposal to the committee and they seemed acceptable to it. So, it breaks down to about 48% of what the original design fee was for the original design, or in other words, $147,500. That breaks down into schematic design, design development, construction documents, the procurement stage or the bidding stage, and then construction admin. And so, for schematic design, it's $5,500. The design development stage is $43,000. Construction documents are $54,000. Bidding administration or the bidding and procurement stage is $5,500. And then, the construction administration phase is $39,500. So, that breaks it all the way down. I know Don has a document for you, so you don't have to, he'll be able to give that to you. So, basically, this is, even though we're using the same components, a lot of the same components, it truly is almost a full redesign because the pool is smaller, so the pipe sizes are different sizes, the pump sizes are different. The location of the building makes the location of the tubing then different and all that sort of stuff. The building is, is completely different. It doesn't look like the original at all. We might have the same components, use the same materials, but we really are redrawing the whole thing for you. So, we are able to use some of the details from the previous design set, but it is mostly a redesign to get us to a point where hopefully we'll be within budget.
And if you recall the way that he gave us the proposal last time, you know, he basically chopped these up into the design phase or the schematic design phase, the design phase, the construction phase, and he had each one of those numbers in that original proposal or agreement. And I think that's what you were talking about, you just kind of, you change these numbers in that one, all the other language would be the same. And then, basically, with council's approval tonight, I would just go through and make sure that these numbers are the numbers that are in the new one totaling $147,500 and we can have the mayor sign it once we review it, if the council's okay with that.
Need another motion on that or not?
Yes, because it would be basically his proposal totaling the $147,500.
Do I hear a motion?
Well, a little confused what the motion is.
Well, the motion basic, well, and we can, we can have him put together the proposal that he had last time, just revise it with these new numbers and have it at the council agenda next, next meeting too, on the 13th.
That's not too late?
No, it's fine. It's a, so basically, it's an AIA contract agreement between owner and architect.
That'd probably be better than we could review it.
And it would be the exact same contract we had for the original design, just with the new numbers. It's all going to be exactly the same.
Is that going to keep you from starting any, anything between now and the 13th to December?
No, I think we can start, since you guys have already said we want to move forward. I'm not going to worry too much about the contract. We'll, we'll keep, we'll get moving on that, so not an issue there.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Amy is still here and in that pool committee, there was a pool committee minutes. And are there any questions for Amy on those or just an FYI?
Didn't have a date. Was it like recently?
Well, we met, what, week and a half ago, but previously, we hadn't met since like January.
Oh, yeah, I see January here.
There's no date on it?
Yeah.
We can get that to you. I'm not sure if you have a date on it.
Any other questions for Amy? Not a thank the pool committee, thanks for all the work you're doing. Let's go down to item number 20, Jeff Sconcing, city prosecuting attorney. Jeff is here this evening and I'll just turn the discussion over to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I was just going to update the council on kind of the status of where things are with Mr. Schlesky. There are four pending court cases. There are four pending court cases in Otter Tail County District Court. Four are related to violations that occurred this summer, some later towards the end of summer. Two relate to rental unit violations and two relate to accumulations of debris or other materials on properties. There's also an active file where he is on probation for a prior conviction related to unlicensed or inoperable vehicles. And the probation agent in that matter has recommended that it be revoked. In other words, that he hasn't complied with the terms of his initial sentence in that file. The next hearing in the matter is scheduled for December thirteenth at ten in the morning. The four new matters are scheduled for what's called a pre-trial hearing. And usually cases resolve at that point or they take the next step, which is a trial. If the matter does go to trial or the matters go to trial, that would probably be scheduled out four to six weeks after that December thirteenth date. So the process, if a person doesn't acknowledge guilt early on and goes all the way to the trial portion or phase, from the time the officer issues the citation, it's about a half a year process before the matter is resolved. My understanding is the probation agent indicates there are still issues that do exist. She has been, her name is Ms. Mimi Sasse, and she has been fairly involved. She's been here to town in two properties on, I don't know how many occasions, but I know more than twice, trying to push things to get done. She has not been completely successful at that and that's why she's recommending that is probation be revoked in the file at the conviction and entry. This has been an ongoing situation. I guess I've probably dealt with it for twelve or thirteen years. There has been two periods of incarceration of prior files. It hasn't seemed to have, really had that much of an effect as the problem continues to exist. Generally speaking, with nuisance situations, there are a few individuals that the activities repeat themselves, but for the most part, a lot of individuals, when they're cited, they get out there and they take care of the issue. And they're not treated that harshly when they take that approach and do that. And this isn't one of those situations. So the outcome, if the court goes along with what's going to be recommended, will involve some incarceration. And it's been recommended that, or will be recommended, that if work releases allowed, and typically if a person's employed, the court will allow that individual to leave the facility, work during the day and then report back in. But the request at this point is going to be that when he is released, that he's released to work on properties. And that's, that's where things are at. I don't know if there's questions that any of you might have or comments.
Counsel, have any comments?
Don? I have a question because you, you mentioned the residential violations and those obviously aren't properties that need cleaning up necessarily, but they need to be addressed. How does that get resolved? I mean, he's out on work release, he's cleaning up properties, but how would the court get him to deal with the violations regarding rental properties?
Typically, and I'll probably have to check with you and see where he's at, if he's done anything towards those two files that relate to that. But typically the court will require it to comply with the ordinance with a certain period of time. And the weapon that the court uses is jail. They use suspended jail sentence with the thought that most people don't like going to jail. So most people will do what's active, but you ask the court to require that, for instance, if it's non-licensed unit, that you bring it in compliance and get it licensed within a certain amount of time.
I wish it was that simple in one of the cases. Because there's a lot more to it than that and short of requiring the person or family or whatever to move out, which is very unfortunate because they should have never been in there to begin with. I don't know how easy that's going to be to resolve in a kind of a timely manner.
And I know many of these types of violations that he's been charged with, probation isn't supervised typically. But that didn't work, so it has been supervised. And the probation agents that have been assigned have been very proactive and hopefully they will continue to do that. Because they're spending substantial amount of time.
Yeah, definitely.
Any other questions, Mr. Skonsing? If not, thank you for sharing this evening, Jeff.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Let's go to item twenty-one, liquor store personnel. We have Maggie Johnson with us here. Maggie?
Thank you. I would like to say first that we have opened back up for Sundays. We're trying to get through football season. On the backside of that, I have a person who said she'd work Sundays and she no longer works at the liquor store anymore, so I need to hire somebody. I have an application from somebody who's currently working at another liquor store. And she's interested in coming to Pelican. She lives around here. I was wondering if I could hire her or if we have to advertise this for a couple of weeks. Because I also have another person who's also interested. And I could take both of them and use both of them.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
I guess, I don't know legally if the city has a precedent where we have to post for those positions, but let's face it, generally you don't have people wanting to work without, especially without advertising.
How does the city staff see that? Do we have to advertise on this occasion?
Well, it's always been, the reason that it was, we've done that and that's kind of been the practice is because when that was kind of talked about prior council, they just felt that it's, it's, they want to give everybody an opportunity and that's what posting the job does. Having said that, she had somebody quit, she needs somebody. And you can still post the job and still approve of the individuals just to see if there's any other interested parties out there that would submit applications. But, you know, she kind of isn't, my understanding is a little bit of a bind because she had that person quit and needs some more staff. Whether you want to hire the one and post and have the other person submit an application under the posting and then review that one or hire them both, whatever you guys want to do, but.
How do you think that would work, Maggie?
I think that would be fine if I could get the one person in there, at least to get started. I can wait until January council meeting and see if we get any other applicants besides the other person who said they were interested.
I know that the one application that I think you got already that you're trying to look to get hired tonight, you know, we've, she has that application. We've, I've seen that application and I don't, she's got the experience, you know, that Maggie's referring to, so we haven't seen an application from the other one, but.
Well, I'd make a motion that we, or you hire the one you're looking to get in right away. Let the other one know that we'll be advertising if you want that other spot filled.
Okay, and for the first one, I can, if you would let me, I would let her know that she is hired. She would still have to finish out where she's at before she can come to me.
Well, that's between you and her, yeah.
But that was also kind of why I needed to get this done because I can't, she can't quit this until she has this.
Right, right.
Be a step one, step two?
Yeah, I think if you guys are going to prove it, you need a name and a level or a starting wage.
It's Missy Jolzner, I'd like to hire her starting at level one.
Yeah, yeah, that's my motion.
Okay. A second? Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried.
Do we need a motion to post for the second or not?
No. We don't need a motion to do it, we'll just do that.
Can we just do this on Facebook and do I need to put it in a paper? How are you going to do that? Because we have in recent past just been doing it on Facebook.
At the liquor store? I don't know that that's the case. We've always posted them in the press too. I mean, you can do it at the same time, I mean, it's.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, it's from a timing standpoint, if you post it on Facebook, we post it on Facebook and we put it in the press and you get applications, we'll still be set to have something on the December thirteenth agenda. That's fine.
Just asking.
Yeah, I would post it everywhere and in the paper.
Yeah, and we'll throw it in the paper.
What's the worst that happens? You get ten, or ten applications, that'd be great.
Anything else, Maggie? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's jump up to item number five, Apex Engineering. We have Mr. Bob Schreeman with us this evening and there's actually three different bullet points he's going to talk about. The first one is just an FYI on the land and the other two need motions. Bob?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and start. Hopefully everybody got the agenda that I provided the city late last week. So we'll start actually with the northwest, I'm going to call it the Northwest of Pelican area. That's the last thing that I've got on the, on my agenda, it's number three. So we've been looking at that area north of Trunk Highway one oh eight west. We had a party that was interested in possibly moving and was developing that area. So we put together some preliminary phasing plans. I presented that to the council. And then we actually moved forward putting together some estimated cost information. So if you look at my agenda, I've got a schematic of that phasing plan that's in there. I think we have four or five phases in there, if I recall. And then the last page of my agenda does have some estimated cost information as well as estimated assessable information, assessment information. So what we get is we have five phases. So in my table, I've got phases one through five. I've got it broken down by assessable cost.
Yeah, I don't have it.
And non-assessable cost. So as you can see there for phase one, the total cost would be about three million, three hundred thousand. Phase two, the total estimated cost was about one point nine million and so on. So the total estimated cost for all five phases was about eleven million dollars. And then as far as for the city's assessment policy, I've got it broken down by assessable and non-assessable. So if you look at the bottom table, I've got an estimated assessment amount per lot for the various phases. And as you can see, it ranges anywhere from about eighty-nine thousand per lot down to about fifty-three thousand per lot. So talking to the, to the developer that was looking at possibly doing something here, those numbers are higher than what he would like to see them at. He's thinking more around that forty, forty thousand dollar per lot as far as assessments go. Please realize out there, obviously, construction costs have gone up significantly in the last year or two. Some of the things that are, lead to increased construction costs, some dewatering ran into some groundwater out there in the last project that we did to accommodate the apartment building. Obviously, your soils in some parts of Pelican Rapids are not real conducive to building streets. So sometimes we got to put a significant amount of slacker on your barrel or aggregate base beneath them. So those are the estimated costs that we've got right now. So basically, I've presented these to the developer and they've just indicated at this time they would probably like to put things on hold and until we see some of these costs hopefully come down in the near future. So, any questions on that?
Just not?
Moving back to the first.
I got a comment about that. And Bob, you can kind of be a part of this, looking forward to. I know that there's been some, some discussion of the possibility that there's, there might be a huge amount of this surplus, a nine billion dollar surplus in the state of earmarking a ton of that money for housing. And to what extent, we don't know. But it's one of the things that the city's going to want to keep an eye out for. And Bob is our engineer too, because if they put together a package that cities can apply for assistance in putting in housing infrastructure like water, sewer and streets, we're going to want to go after it. The thing is, it's going to be very, very competitive. But that's one way we could possibly get some funding to help buy them assessments down to where the developer would come back feeling a lot more comfortable because, again, the state then would be basically helping us put in that infrastructure and it wouldn't be an assessment to those landowners or lot owners, homeowners. So just something to note.
Moving on to page one of my agendas. The other thing that I wanted to touch base on this evening is this is a lot of the same information that I've presented in the past. I wanted to just discuss two grant opportunities that are coming up here at the end of this year and then early in January. So the first one is the MINDOT Active Transportation Infrastructure Grant Program. This would apply to the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five Trunk Highway fifty-nine and one oh eight project. So the city's already secured a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar transportation alternative grant. Those are federal funds. This program would actually be, it's a state program through MINDOT. There's three point five million dollars available to the entire state. Applications must be between fifty thousand and five hundred thousand. So grants from this program can be used as your required match to your federal grant that you've already received. So I think we've already discussed this. I think we've already gotten authorization to move forward with this. At a minimum, I think we would want to apply for the hundred and ten thousand and for the match that you have required from the TA grant and then possibly even more. I think we should apply for even more than that. The reason I'm here this evening is that since you're a city of under five thousand in population, you're required to have a sponsor. So Otter Tail County needs to sponsor you for this program. So and typically what happens is Otter Tail County, for them to pass their resolutions agreeing to sponsor you, they want to see a commitment from the city. Here is, I've got a resolution basically supporting the active transportation project that I would ask you to consider passing this evening. Once I get that, then I will forward that on to the county. They have to pass some resolutions. The deadline for submitting this application is, if I recall, is December thirtieth. So the timeline is pretty short here. So that's the first one. The second one is the Greater Minnesota Transportation Alternatives Grant Program. That would apply to MINDOT reconstructing Highway fifty-nine from Fifth Avenue South to I ninety-four and twenty twenty-seven. So the second one, the Transportation Alternatives Grant Program, is the program that you've already secured the five hundred and fifty thousand from for the fifty-nine one oh eight project that's going to take place in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Same exact thing, what we need from you folks this night is a, this evening is a resolution. Basically indicating that the city is going to move ahead with that, so I can get that to the county. Again, they need to sponsor you for this program, for this program as well. I believe both resolutions should be included in there with your information, so any questions on that?
Do we need two motions or just one?
I think we're going to need two separate resolutions. Yeah, one for each grant program.
Have they agreed to sponsor? Has Otter Tail County agreed to sponsor?
I've talked to Chuck Grati, who is the county engineer in Otter Tail County regarding this and he's, he's aware of the projects and from the information or conversations that I've had with Mr. Grati, yeah, they're on board with sponsoring the city through these, these programs, as they've done in the past.
Well, first of all, looking for a motion to, for project resolution two zero two two dash two three.
I'll move we pass twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Then we have project resolution two zero two two dash two four, looking for a motion to approve.
I'm going to pass resolution two thousand twenty-two dash two four.
Second? Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried.
Is there anything else for me this evening?
You have anything else for us?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
The developer that was looking at this project, is he going to be kind of in semi-retirement while this interest rates go crazy or what?
You know, I can't answer that. There might be some other areas in other communities where maybe there's utilities that are more available and can be installed at a, at a less expensive cost to him. I don't know, we'll have to wait and see. It's going to be interesting, definitely moving forward here to see what happens with similar stuff. And maybe the market's just going to have to shift where people are going to, they want to build, build on new lots or new homes or just going to obviously have to pay more. I don't know, it's going to be interesting to see what happens. It's going to be interesting to see what happens. Yeah. Yeah, very good question.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number six, Houston Engineering. There's two bullet points. One is FYI for Pelican Peak removal update. Then there's a dam removal update and award, which is in our packet. Then we added that O&M plan bullet point. And I believe we have Amanda Hillman on the line.
Yeah, she's also online.
Wes Keller is here from Houston Engineering, and I'll turn it over to you, Wes.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me again today. First, I'll go over just a quick update of where we're at with the Pelican Peak relocation project. As I'm sure you're all aware, the relocation has not taken place yet. We do have a contractor, under contract, and we have been working with them and the interested agencies involved in the review of the relocation and temporary base design plan that has been submitted by the contractor. Due to these review periods, we did extend the final completion date to December 30th of this year. As of last week, we did get approval from the agencies to support the contractor to move forward with their removal and relocation plan. And the contractor is currently working on getting that temporary base constructed for this. I've been in contact with the contractor this week. I was hoping to have an updated schedule from him today, but I would expect that within the next day or two. And as soon as I have that, I'll certainly share that with the city to update you guys on the schedule for that. As far as the relocation of Pelican Peak goes, if you happen to answer any questions before we move on.
Any questions? Just not?
Okay. So second, you can see on the screen here, I just wanted to go over our bid opening results from November 10th for the Pelican Rapids Dam Removal and River Restoration Project. As you'll see, we had three bidders for the project. Overall, the bids were competitive. We did have a low bid submitted by Rachel Contracting with Schroder Contracting as a sub for that of roughly $2.5 million. I will note, this was just under 6% under our engineer estimate of $2.65 million. With that being said, a large portion of that $2.5 million is funded by the state for the river restoration. And here is, I included a breakdown of basically all of the bid items and total costs related to the eligible funding for that. So we have the state-funded portion, which would be the Fish Passage number there, roughly $2,000,199. The bridge portion of $456,000. And the non-participating portion, which were... is primarily the storm sewer cost we have discussed a few weeks ago to get that updated. So with that, I did also include a breakdown of how that looks for the city costs. For the bridge portion, you can see the construction number there. We also included a 5% construction contingency just to account for if there's any differences with any of the materials out there, any changes in construction. We also have the engineering fee that that has been already designed. And then we also included an estimate for the construction admin and observation of the bridge portion there, with that coming to a total of $556,000. I will note, what you're not seeing there is the portion that is funded by the grant obtained by the city for the bridge of $260,000. And then we also have the storm sewer construction number there, as well as, you know, another contingency we included, and the estimated construction admin and observation fees for that. So that was the kind of the total breakdown of how the bids came in with our estimated remaining fees to finish the job. And we will just note, we did, you know, review all the bid packages. The low bidder did contractors and did meet all requirements and had all the required documents. And at this time, we would ask the council to consider recommending the award of the dam removal and river restoration project to the low bidder, Rachel Contracting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the dam removal project.
I'm surprised how close the numbers are. Is that typical?
Or are the...
Yeah, the lowest in the middle bid. Is that...
Almost $300,000 difference between the low and the high.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's not a very standard project, so I was surprised.
Yeah, no, it's definitely, you know, you can tell there was some competitive bids there. The low bid and the second there with Meyer Contracting, you know, just under $30,000 difference there. So good to see.
What's the subcontractor? What's the... Could you explain that, please?
Yeah, so Rachel Contracting is the general contractor for the job. They're the prime contractor. They have Aaronon Schroder Contracting, who has a lot of experience with bridge construction in Minnesota. They will handle a lot of the structural work related to the bridge construction, as well as the new Pelican Peak Foundation. So they're slated to do a lot of that work as part of Rachel's team.
Wes, where are these firms from, Rachel and Schroder?
It is actually slipping my mind right now. Rachel, St. Michael, yeah. Yep, there is. And then Schroder is just south of Alexandria.
Okay.
So...
Are you familiar with them?
Yes. I've actually worked with Schroder on a lot of different bridge projects, and they're a very good contractor to work with. Rachel's also done a lot of work in the area. They're a large contractor. They do a lot of work in Minnesota and have done some of these rock ripple projects, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they worked on the Minnesota Falls Dam removal with us. Rachel did.
Don? One of the things that I wanted to talk to... put out to the council on this cost estimate, the top one regarding the bridge, the $556, like Wes alluded to, we're going to get $260,000 from the state for this, which leaves almost $300,000 that the city's going to have to come up with. And I think I've alluded to this before. The city has basically committed the $260 of Liquor Store savings funds for the bridge are part of it. But because of the lengthening of the bridge, and then now we know what the cost is going to be based on the bids, we're short that $40,000. So just so that we have it in basically minutes, if the council would feel led to, I would recommend that you basically would approve up to $300,000 at this point of Liquor Store savings to go towards the bridge. That's raising it from $260 up to $300,000.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, we did include that $22,800 as a contingency. You know, obviously, if that isn't used in construction, that wouldn't be a cost to the city, so.
Right. Anything we don't use, we'll put back in the Liquor Store savings account. You want another motion on that?
I would. I think you guys maybe did make a motion to the $260, but you've never done it to the $300.
Okay, let's... Looking for a motion to approve dam removal river restoration to Rachel Contracting for $2,496,702.90.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Okay, the next motion. Don, do you want to read the language?
Would just be to commit $300,000 towards the bridge project from the Liquor Store savings account.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried.
One other thing, too, on the sewer, storm sewer portion of this. Now, obviously, that's something that we included in the bids, and you guys just approved it through the bids, through accepting the bids. But there's going to be a large portion of this that we're expecting to get reimbursed from the state when we do the 2024 project. We haven't just figured out logistically how the state's going to do that. But this has a lot to do with that new structure for the new storm drain that comes off of Mill Avenue towards the river, and then from that structure down to into the river as the outlet. And so the city really is just responsible for the outlet portion of it. We've already talked to the state, and they've kind of agreed that they would take care of the upsizing of that storm drain from Mill Avenue to the new catch basin structure, but also the catch basin structure itself. But we had to include it in this so that it gets done at this time, so, just so you know.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next bullet point.
O&M plant?
Yeah, what was... Well, I can let Wes talk about it, but we handed out the council. It wasn't in here, but we handed them the draft that Amanda sent over.
True. But I can just give a little bit of a background on that. So the O&M plan is a requirement through, you know, finalizing all the permitting for the project. One of the permits required to obtain was a dam safety permit. One of the requirements of the dam safety permit is an O&M plan or an operation and maintenance plan to be established. And this is typically required for any structure that meets the criteria of a dam. And, you know, although this rock weir structure is a lot safer than the existing dam, it is still going to be holding back a residual pool behind it, has a stationary grade control structure. And with the actual height of the structure from the top of the weir down to the bottom where the rock rapids ends, it classifies as a dam. So within those requirements, the O&M manual is a requirement of this just to maintain that grade, you know, that weir elevation at the upstream side of that rock ripple, keep it free of debris and any, you know, any sort of movement or anything with, you know, debris getting clogged up on the rapids or anything like that. So that's how the maintenance plan, you know, came to be. And I don't know, Amanda, if you had anything else to add to that?
No, it's just, you know, it's taking that current O&M plan and updating it to now be, instead of a dam, a rapid structure. And, you know, you know, this is pretty typical for all the projects you've done, so. No, I don't have anything to add beyond that. Is there a question?
Amanda, the state does not have any Rock Rapids inspection program like they do with dams?
You know, I'm not sure on that. You know, dam safety might still, you know, check on them once in a while, but I think it's more just, you know, if something's shifted or changed, you know, let's just kind of keep in track of those things. Because I think that state inspections are every four years. But that being said, we don't expect, you know, once the construction's done and the, you know, the first year of its installation warranty is done, we don't expect it. We've done 40 of these, and out of the 46 have ever needed adjustments. Those were the ones that we did way back in the day before this design was finalized. The design we use now is... None of the ones with the design we use now have ever needed adjustments.
Another question, Amanda. First bullet point, the city agrees to maintain reservoir level. What do you mean by that?
Well, you know, water's going to fluctuate. The height and depth of the river's going to fluctuate. But that just means that the runout elevation of the rapids isn't going to change. Like I said, we haven't had to adjust that after construction using this design. You know, but if something like that were to happen, you know, say there's something that's never happened before, you know, that's a definite... It'd be just like owning a dam, you know. We could talk with you and see if there's sunny out there. And, you know, we've invested a lot of money in this, too, and have a solid interest in making sure there's Fish Passage and a stable structure as well. We're going to be monitoring and monitoring the screen as it... We're going to be out there to monitor most of the construction.
Are you comfortable with this? Your guys are the...
Yeah, we'll have to do it, which... We have a dam rock now that's probably bigger pain than adjusting the rock rapids, honestly. It's just going to be if we have to start getting heavy equipment in there is where we'll be, you know, to move rocks or whatever. But it's really no different than lifting the gates when we have to hire people up. They fell, and so I... I'm fine.
And I guess I would add, you know, construction is slated to be complete November of next year. From that period, there would be a year warranty period to where, if anything, would happen in that time. That'd be something that the contractor would be liable for, like, were construction issues, so.
So you're looking for another motion to approve the operation maintenance inspection plan for the Rock Rapids?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
My only question is, Amanda, there is no signatures on this document, so do you need a DNR and a city signature on this to make it official, so to speak?
Yeah, I'd have to ask Jason Boyle, dam safety, and I can follow up with you, Don.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Anything else, Wes?
That's it.
Okay, thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Going on down to item number seven, skating rink personnel. We have Superintendent Brian Olson with us this evening to speak to that.
Yes, thank you. I'm actually not scheduled to give much report, but before I do that, I just want to give a quick highlight. I had an email from Councilman Strand talking about some things over the weekend or when it was. He mentioned well security right up at well 15 has been taken care of. Got a photo eye on it, so it's good. I drove by it after I read it, and I still couldn't really tell that it was on, but... And the lights in Peterson Park probably haven't worked in a year and a half. They've been... I've had them checked. I'm going to have them checked again. Last time, they couldn't get the metal halide walk bulb for them. So I've got somebody going to look again just to make sure. But they've been out for forever up there, so. So I just was like, oh, they turned the lights on in the bridge, so people were walking over there, I'm sure. So didn't dawn on me, so.
And then... Updating the lights in the dam?
Yes, and they will be updated through this project. So we're going to be adding, I believe there's seven or eight lights going to be added to Peterson Park through the bridge and through the park. So the lights that are existing there will all be LED through Otter Tail Power, like we will with the street. We'll have a contract with them. So a couple, well, maybe a year, we'll have new lights up there, so. Yeah. And I also had somebody talk about closing the streets on Friday. And I had written down on my notes that any time between one and two to do that, and I went back and I actually YouTube'd what Regina Johnson had said, and that's exactly what she said, so that's what we did.
One to two, really?
Yeah, and unfortunately, it was in the comment section, and so there was no motion, no nothing made on that. And so we'll have to remember that next year that when they, you know, go ahead and look at the time, so. Just, just so you know, that's what it was said, that's why we did it. I had phone calls, I'm sure you guys had some phone calls, but in the end it worked out, the parade was nice, so.
Oh, it's my fault, I thought it, three thirty was starting.
Yeah, no, I, they started at three, our clock was some horse ride or something, but it was, it was one to two when I, when I looked at it, because I was really debating it myself, so I just wanted to be clear that that's where I got it and I didn't, didn't make it up, so. Yes, and then on to the simple skating rink hire, hiring, and now I have four that I need approvals to hire. I'm, I'm hoping to get at least two more, just because kids have everything going on, but at this time, I would like to hire Kale Richardson, Kyle Crump, Dylan Hoodley, and Brandon Heaton. And their rate is fourteen dollars.
Are you missing Tori Huseby?
Oh, and Tori Huseby, I'm sorry, she was not in the, in there. And Tori Huseby, so five, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I went through that file twice today, isn't that fun?
Could you do the list again, please?
Kale Richardson, Kyle Crump, Dylan Hoodley, Brandon Heaton, and Tori Huseby. I would have been in trouble.
Move to approve, and they're all at the same pay?
All at the fourteen dollars an hour, yeah.
Move to approve the five hires for the skating rink at fourteen, whatever it was.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's all I have, any questions for me?
Brian, back to the time, it doesn't have to be that early, does it? I mean, if you're running a store, I mean, that's...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. We'd, we'd like, I'd like it to be done by four, so I don't have to pay the guys overtime, but even if we set them out on the cone, we can get maybe the business owners to run out, you know, I, I understand, I thought, you know, so.
It's a big day, okay.
We'll just have to kind of make note of that for next year and I'll put it in my notes too, in the file, so.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
As far as additional little thing, where the horses are staged at, I think if that little section between the back edge of the elevator, that little bypass would be closed as well, I think it would be awesome. Some of the teams are doing like horses chirping through their honking and waving and stuff like that, so.
Okay, I will write that down.
Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, senior center purchase agreement, and there's a few different papers in our, in our packet this evening. We have Lindsey Forsgren here, our city attorney, to address that. We also have Lana Grupshew in the audience who has purchased the building. And, but before we, I don't know if we do it now or, we have to rescind the motion from previously?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that's what you...
Do you want to do that right away, or what?
Last council meeting, you guys had moved to approve the purchase agreement as it was, there were a few additional changes that needed to be made, so we just need to repeal that and make a new motion to accept this purchase agreement.
So you know who first and seconded the motion?
I believe it was Irving Evans.
I think I remember making the motion.
You definitely made the motion, I think you were second, but...
Well, she's looking that up, Mayor. One of the things, Lindsey, if you would, I've got all the documents, I think, in, in, in the packet, but a lot of those documents, we've never seen before, the council's never seen before when we've done sales like this. So if you could kind of, as you're going through, kind of explain them all to, the reason for them, because, you know, some of the, you have the cost breakdown and stuff too, but just so that they could get an idea of why they're in there.
You're talking about like the warranty deed and the easement?
No, I'm talking about the...
Closing statements?
The closing statements, you had a couple of other things in there that, well, there's the closing statement, you know, buyer seller closing statement, this sewage thing, and then the warranty deeds and stuff, if you'd just kind of touch on that, that'd be appreciated.
But first, we're looking at a motion to rescind.
Yeah, and it was my draft, and the motion and Valerie seconded.
I'll make a motion to rescind my motion of last council meeting regarding the sale of the senior center, or the approval of the purchase agreement of the senior center.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a new motion to approve the purchase agreement as written currently.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion.
She's going to explain it.
There should be two versions in your packet, there should be the final version and then a second version with all the changes that are in, made in red.
Point it out, yeah.
Yep, there it is, so.
This is the one with the changes?
If you have any questions, what do you mean the changes, I mean, we can go through that.
Any discussion on this?
And all the changes that are in this basically have been reviewed by the buyer also?
Correct.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All is the same, aye? Okay.
Okay, so going through the documents, warranty deed versus quick claim deed, you have to have a warranty deed when your purchase price is over a certain amount, so because we were over that certain amount, we switched it from quick claim deed to warranty deed. So that's all that is, Lana took a look at all these documents and she thought they looked good. I did ask her to check the proposed dimensions, I guess, of the easement and if that wasn't going to be good enough, order it needed more or less or whatever to let me know. I didn't hear from her, so I assume this easement is, is good to go. Do you guys have any questions on the easement agreement? So it's a non-exclusive ingress and egress, which just essentially means that, that Lana gets to use it, but it doesn't exclude anyone else from using it also, so the city will still have access to that property that it's giving an easement to. And to avoid the survey, I'd be basically just gave her the entire north side of the building to make sure that the door was encompassed within that. Closing statements, so we've got the buyer and seller closing statements, those are just documents that go to you guys, there's some information that needs to get filled out. I need the EIN for the buyer and the EIN for the seller, and that is for the certificate of real estate value, which needs to be done in this matter. The sewage treatment system property transfer form, that's a requirement in Otterdale County, so that's a form that goes with the sale of property. We know well of the property, we're examined. The closing statements will break on the amount, so the nineteen thousand five hundred is the sale, those funds will be made payable to the city and delivered to the city at the time of closing. There is no financing, there is no escrow, so there's no, you know, deposit into this account, issue a new check, everything's just directly to the city. So with that, you'll see that with the nineteen thousand five hundred, we actually deduct your, your seller expenses, but rather than mess with that, my recommendation is to just have the city make a separate check to Greckelburg Law Firm for that amount. And just, I would take the check from the city and the check from Lana at closing. Those amounts would then be used to pay the outstanding invoices, which include the expenses, the reporting fees and all of that. Then my firm sends those documents off to the recording, pays the recording fees, the original warranty deed goes to Lana, and a copy of the warranty deed goes to the city, the original easement goes to the city with a copy of the easement to Lana. Seller gets a copy of seller closing statement, buyer gets a copy of buyer closing statement, you don't get each other's because they have sensitive information on them. These drafts not have the sensitive information on them, that's why they're included, but they also refer to the invoices, which I charged the city a penny for. An uneven breakdown, so. Any questions on any of those documents? So we, we approved the purchase agreement, so that can be signed tonight when the meeting is over, or if we can break, we can do that, but I was just putting a date on page one and then putting the proper signatures on the last page. The only matter left would be to schedule a time for closing tomorrow, where I can be here, Danielle, Brent, and Lana should sign those documents, exchange monies.
Are you still looking for a motion to approve the easement?
And the, and the warranty deed?
Yeah.
And the signing by the mayor and the clerk.
So how many motions you looking at?
Well, yeah, I suppose you, you, it does make sense to do a motion to approve the warranty deed and the easement agreement, so it's probably two separate motions, and then a motion to schedule a closing tomorrow. Here, I, I will just come here from my office, whatever term works for the three of you. I do have simultaneously signatures for Brent and Danielle, but that should be...
Who has to be here tomorrow?
You, Danielle, and Lana.
Afternoon, afternoon.
Okay.
I'm out of time, I'm all worried.
Move to approve the presented warranty deed.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All is the same, aye? And?
Easement agreement.
Move to approve the easement agreement as written.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All is the same, aye, motion carried.
Now, I don't even necessarily need a motion to set the closing time, we just, we just need to set the closing time.
Okay, motion, just pick a time.
So what works for you, Brian? I can make...
Let's be safe and say three o'clock?
Three o'clock. Okay, so then, closing what happened here at three o'clock tomorrow, original documents that are signed come with me, I send them to the recorder's office, and along the checks, I distribute. So then the check, or the city will need a check to Greckelburg Law Firm, and the amount of five seventy-eight eighteen, as the invoice states.
Which they will have to approve tonight.
The what?
It should be in your outstanding accounts payable, but if you want to make a separate motion, go ahead and do that. So you, you have an invoice dated November thirtieth, which is the date of closing, so you would make a motion to approve payment of that invoice at the time of closing.
What was that total again?
Five seventy-eight eighteen. Which is the cost of preparation of legal documents, reporting fees, and de-tax.
I make a motion that we provide a check for five seventy-eight eighteen to Greckelburg Law Firm.
At the November thirtieth.
At the November thirtieth closing.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All is the same, aye?
Those are just take like action, and it should be quick, so if there are any more questions, they're me.
See you then.
Here tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go on to item number ten, mobile home park utility deposit fee, and councilman should talk to that.
Well, the city has a deposit for mobile homeowners, fifty dollars, and I know you've had a chance to think about this since last time, you didn't support me, but it's, it's wrong, it's discrimination, it can't be, we just... The type of home you live in, you just, you can't treat a segment of your town differently. So I move to get rid of that deposit, if possible, give credit for those that we know about on their bills. That's my motion. We have a motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Motionized, lack of interest.
I think we need to have a little bit of discussion on this though, because I understand where Steve's coming from on this, but if we have a water bill that's not paid, it goes to the homeowner, which it gets assessed to their taxes. But since this is a mobile home, it doesn't get assessed to the taxes. The land is actually owned by somebody else where the, um, the mobile home is whoever the owner is. And in some cases, these owners have changed hands two or three or four times, so we don't know. But only one fee was ever paid. I'm not saying that to make sense, am I?
Well, but you're right, because the original deposit may have been paid by the original purchaser of that mobile home. They would sell it to somebody else who would sell it to somebody else who would sell it to somebody else, so the person, if we refunded them now, the person that actually paid it may not be, or the person that actually paid it may not be the person that gets the refund, number one. Number two, you're right in the fact that every other property in Pelican Rapids, if there's a delinquent water bill, we assess it to the property owner and they pay the city in full. At the mobile home park, if somebody skips out on a water bill, we have no recourse, all we have is that deposit. So in a lot of sense, we're showing favoritism to the mobile home park because they don't have to cover the whole bill. They just cover fifty bucks of it if they leave without paying the final bill, so they're already getting the benefit.
We talked about this last time, you said it wasn't an issue, you couldn't even think of, you know, if there were any last year, so...
I, I, I couldn't tell you today if there was any last year, I'm just, I'm just saying...
Not a big deal.
I'm just saying that they're already getting a benefit that they don't, they don't get it assessed to their property like the rest of the community.
For a homeowner, it's a safety net. No, I understand that, but it's just not an issue, so you guys are wrong. They don't have a safety net with, with mobile home. It's not been an issue. We haven't lost a bunch of money.
What makes it an issue for you that, why are we even...
Discrimination.
It is not.
Well, it is.
It's discrimination that everybody else in the community pays all of theirs.
No, you're wrong.
So we're not going to see it the same way, but...
Okay, let's move on. Item number eleven, set water and sewer rates, fees and charges, we have a resolution two zero two-two dash two-five, which is in our packet.
I actually handed out a new one because I had the wrong amount.
Yeah, so basically the correction was, Don, in the sewer rate part, the one you got put in the packet said three seventy per thousand, it should have been three eighty-five. I think that was the only change.
The sewer rate?
The sewer rate.
Sewer rate.
Yeah.
So you guys had kind of looked at this last time and you just said we bring before you the actual resolution that we need to approve.
Yeah, three eighty-five is correct.
And I don't know that, you know, because the resolution hasn't been approved yet, we haven't put anything out to the community, so we'll, if you guys approve the resolution, we will start making sure that those notices get put in water bills.
Yeah.
And the new rates began the first, first day.
And move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five.
Second then. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number twelve is personnel policy, resolution two zero two-two dash two-one, discussion, we, that was on our last, uh, agenda for our last meeting, and we really didn't have much time to, to do any studying on this, or the evening was getting long, so we decided to move it to this council meeting. Don, do you want to talk to that?
Yeah, so what I included in the packet this time was the resolution, that was in the packet last time, but this time it's just the, the resolution, the clean version of it, and I had asked the council if they had, as I read through it... it. And I had asked the council if they had, as I read through it and looked at it over the past couple of weeks, or whatever week and a half, if any questions to give me a call. I didn't hear anything, didn't have any questions, other than Councilman Foster actually scheduled a time to come in and sit down with me, and we sat down for an hour yesterday, I believe it was, and went through the whole thing. So he got the long version of it. So for starters, I guess, you guys had it in the last packet, the marked up version of it, and if there's any questions on the markups, or do you want me to go through the markups, how do you want to do this? Or if you've looked through it and looked through the markup version and understand it, you could just make a motion to pass the resolution. Now, the one thing I'll say is, in going through it, there is no, there is no loss of benefits to the employees with the changes that have been made. Nothing changes to where there's going to be less benefits than they've always got. There was added language to the maternity leave section that basically dealt with parental leave now, because it's not just typically the female spouse or the mom that takes maternity leave anymore. There's also the dads do now. So that was added language as it related to maternity leave. There was also new language dealing with funeral leave that we didn't have before, so that's new. And it just provides for a little bit of a guideline or some direction for employees that would like to request funeral leave for anybody in their immediate family. It's not anything the city pays for. They cover it with leave time, vacation, comp. And then there's also a revision in there dealing with jury duty, and also maintaining, a section maintaining deduction benefits while people are on unpaid leave. Because right now, there's, there's, you know, dental on a pre-tax basis, there are people that get on dental, that's taken out of their check. There might be additional life insurance they pay for, that type of thing, or whatever it may be, that's deducted from their check on a pre-tax basis. Well, we've got policy precedents that we followed when people take time off on unpaid leave. How do you handle maintaining those things that are typically taken out of a check, but if they're on unpaid leave and they don't, or they don't have the vacation comp or whatever to cover those things, how is that handled? Well, we had a way we were doing it, but it wasn't in paper. It wasn't written down. So when it relates to funeral leave, jury duty and the maintenance of payroll deduction type benefits, those are things that are put in there to clarify for future administrators, future clerks. This is how we do that stuff. We've always done it this way, but it's never been in writing. So that's really the overall, the short version of it.
It also cleans up the language that was in the previous one, because it was based on the FMLA legislation, where now we're going with the state of Minnesota's legislation for this. So we're following all the rules and requirements that we need to, but it just cleans up the language, so things are more defined.
Yeah, under the old one, we've followed basically the FMLA, which is more of a federal and the state's medical leave. So we're doing both of them. The federal one or the FMLA one is more of a processed structure on how you go through if somebody basically, you know, if you want to allow them to claim FMLA, which basically protects their job for 12 weeks while they're gone. Well, state law basically has something similar to that anyway, protecting their job in the event that they're out for medical reasons. Well, from talking with the attorneys and with going through the, one of our ex-employees, going through that whole process, we found that the FMLA, which we were not required to have, really made that a more drawn out process than it should have been. Under FMLA, you have to work for a city or an employer for 12 months, so many hours for that 12 months, before you can even claim it. And so, under the state, it's different than that. But under FMLA, which meant that because we had that process, we had to technically, you know, anybody that met that, them hours over a 12-month period, if they were here for 12 months and they had them hours, that threshold, if they had that, then they could claim FMLA, and we had to protect their job for at least 12 weeks. Well, that's exactly what happened to us, and all it did was it turned around to kind of bite the city a little bit, because we could have finalized the process on an ex-employee much quicker, at a little bit less cost. So if we don't have to have that drawn out process, and we still have to follow the state, it doesn't make any sense to still have FMLA. So the attorneys basically, looking at all this, said, why would the city want to put themselves through that if they don't need to? They're not required to because we don't have 50 employees. So for that reason, they recommend, and I recommend, that it's removed from the personnel policy. And that's, the FMLA portion of it had something to say about maintaining benefits like health insurance, et cetera. It was in the FMLA portion. Well, since that's removed, that's why we added that, specifically that portion of maintaining benefits, payroll benefits, and how we're going to do that without FMLA anymore. The city, and basically in a sense, what it does is, the way we've been doing it is, any unpaid leave, basically, if the employee has dental coverage, for instance, which means that there's, that would be taken out of their check every month, there'd be so much taken out, and through their payroll deduction. Well, if they're no longer here and getting a check, they still are responsible for making a payment to the city on their behalf to stay on the city's dental coverages. So when they do come back, if they do come back, it just picks up as if it never ended. So that's what this is doing. We're putting everything in practice on paper.
I'll move passage of resolution 2022-21 Personnel Policy.
Hear a second?
Hold on a second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number 13, City-City School Collaboration Contribution Discussion. And we talked, well, the school was here last council meeting to talk about that multi-use building up at Chauncey Martin Field, and they're looking for a collaboration of finances also from the city-county. And we hit on this a little bit last meeting, and there was an amount of $150,000 that got brought up. We did not make a motion to approve that, so we got to carry on that discussion at this time. Don, do you have anything to add to that? Anything happen since then?
Just a, you know, reminder that school mentioning it doesn't have to be paid all at once, it can be paid over a series of years. And I don't know if the 150 was something that I brought up or whatever, but, and I know there was some thought that maybe it should be higher than that. And it can be, it's whatever the council wants to do, but I just want to throw out there with all the other things that we, the city still does need to try and accomplish. The fact that we're taking $300,000 from the liquor store savings for the bridge, dedicated that much towards it, and hopefully it doesn't go over that. We're already taking $100,000 from the liquor store savings every year to buy down the levy and the budget. And then with this commitment, if it is 150, if we did that for $30,000, or for $30,000 a year for five years, you know, technically, instead of $100,000 in the general budget, it would really, starting next year, we've already approved the $100,000, but we'd be bringing over an extra $30,000. I just want to caution about going too high. You can always make a commitment, and then based on, you know, the liquor store, just watching that and see how the savings are doing and that type of thing, in light of also the other things you want to try and do in the city. You can always go back, even if you commit, say 150, and then decide later on you want to do something more, you can. But I would just caution about going too high right out of the gate. Can the liquor store support more than that? We would suspect it can, but you've got a lot of other things that are going to be on your plate, too.
Comments from the council?
We had discussion with the school that would be 150, right?
Yeah, correct, yeah. They were happy with that.
I think that was more than they thought.
Yeah.
I think Kevin was on board with that, too, it seemed. With the original amount that the school kind of brought up, I think they brought up an amount, didn't they?
It was 100 to 125.
And that was with the original design that they talked to you guys about, but it had grown.
Yeah, so the 150 is actually more than the original conversation. What would you like to do?
I'll make a motion we give 100, or spend 150 on this city-county school collaboration for the building.
Installments or all at once?
No, installments.
Yeah.
They were satisfied with the installments, so.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Okay, thank you. Item number 14, December 27th, 2022 council meeting. Danielle, you want to talk to that, please?
I do. So, you know what I'm going to say. As in the past, we generally do not have a last December, and the last meeting in December would be scheduled for December 27th. And so I was wondering what council wanted to do, if they want to have a meeting, or if they want to skip the meeting, and if you want to skip it, like a motion.
Are you going to do a bill listing like you did last couple of years with emailing out a bill listing and get email approval?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I do. Everything I've always done.
So that would be your recommendation, Danielle?
Oh, you want a recommendation? Yes, I would recommend not having the December 27th meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that, recommended?
Does he usually do that?
I know.
I was the instigator, but I'm here this year.
I'll move we have no meeting on the 27th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number 15, just planning commission minutes, which are in your packet, that's an FYI. Any discussion there? Hearing none. Item number 16 is park board minutes, which are in your packet. Any discussion or questions there? Hearing none. Before we move on to item number 17, 18 and 19, have I covered everything on the agenda? We've been hopscotched all over the board here. Okay. Okay, then we'll move on. Item number 17, administrator report, Don.
Since the last meeting, I worked with the clerk to set the agenda and get prepped for all of this. I attended various MINDOT 2024 project meetings, and as I mentioned, that was Councilman Foster regarding the personnel policy. That's my report.
Any questions for Don?
It's never been that short.
There was some vacation time and holidays in there, sorry.
You went to that MINDOT meeting where they talked about.
Crosswalks.
Yeah.
That was just today, yeah, just real briefly. They just wanted to confirm where we wanted the crosswalk with the beacons, like we have down on Fourth, Fifth and Seventh now. And it was just a discussion about those crosswalks and the beacons that we're going to put there, that's all of us.
Any other questions for Don? Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number 18, mayors report a few items, mine's longer than Don's tonight, wow. November 17th, attended a complete streets meeting here at City Hall with Administrator Solga and Superintendent Olson. Attended the open house at the Islamic Society of Pelican Rapids on November 19. Attended the Otter Tail County Public Hearing regarding the moratorium on HTC products at Government Services Building on November 21. Conducted the conversations with the mayor at Historic City Hall on November 23. Yesterday, I attended the Otter Tail Lakes County Association Annual Meeting in Virgus. Today, November 29, attended that MINDOT meeting, which Don just talked about, and also today I reviewed the agenda with Administrator Solga for this council meeting. Any questions?
Thank you.
Seeing no other items, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, meeting adjourned.